We are, pardon my voice, I was sick.
But you're not now.
Okay, but I'm not now. Call the order of the meeting, we have a forum. And so we'll begin with a public comment. The way the meeting is structured, so we have public comments, then we'll have, um, we'll go over the meeting minutes, then we'll have a presentation on the budget, then we'll open up for a public hearing. People are welcome to speak for, on the public hearing. Uh, and then the board of trustees will consider, ask questions. Um, they might ask questions after the, or during the, the, um, presentation.
Do people need to sign up for the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll just leave that there until we have a public hearing, if that's okay. Um, so, alright, and then we have treasurer report, some director updates, trustee matters, that kind of stuff. So, uh, public comment first, I have, uh, an only public speaker, Lynn. Is she in here?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just gonna, I gotta take my hand down on this one, so they don't call me all the time.
Okay.
So, um, yeah.
Oh, Lynn Siegel, we have Lynn Siegel.
As David knows, I'm not a fan of the library district. I'm very, very opposed to it, it's very aggressive cats at $350 a year for, for me. And I just think that we should, you know, have, manage our budget with the city. So that maybe we just have to have less dinners or something, you know, we have to have less, uh, less more. Um, and, and, and stick to governmental issues. And, um, so it's really disheartening because I've worked in a library. My family on my brother's side were educators, three generations of them. And yet, I feel really upset about coming here and being here because of the way I'm paying for it. And I don't think it's fair. And I don't know what to do because it's permanent, right? It's like a non-expiring cat, right David? I don't know, it shouldn't be. There should be a petition to change it. Because people like me don't appreciate the $150 a year. I mean, it's $10 a year here, or $10 a year there, and it's all the rising. The Trump administration and everything is breaking this whole economy. The restaurants downtown are closing, we have no sales tax revenue, you know? And this is the way we operate this, and no one has convinced me of the, the. There's not been a good community debate about what's better about the district than not the district. And I'd just like to see more transparency, more engagement with the community, and with the people that might not agree with you. And, you know, I guess that's all I was disappointed.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move to.
Somebody's gotta sign up.
Oh, pu- public comment?
I'm there.
You wanna speak for public comment, or the public hearing on the budget?
Um.
Either one, or both.
Either, well, I'll wait for the budget.
Okay.
And then say what I need to say.
Okay.
Okay?
Did you, did you sign up?
Yeah, okay, good.
And there's, there's.
I'm okay, okay.
Okay. So now we're gonna move to approval of the meeting minutes from September 16th, and from October 21st. Any have, anyone have comments or comments?
So the September 16 minutes, these were the ones that I, um, did a little editing and updated them to more directly reflect the dinner meeting that we had with city council and the discussion. And so that's now referenced for the record, um, in our minutes. So I would move approval of the September 16th, 2025 minutes as presented.
Okay, so we'll do them separately?
Yeah.
Alright. Anyone second, or have any more comments? Oh, there's a motion on the floor. We'll take a second, and then we can take more comments if anybody wants to move on. On the 16th.
Awesome.
Okay, any, any other comments? Okay, um, so, motion is to approve some meeting minutes, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Say 16th. Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And then related to the minutes of October 21st, um, and the number of people that we had in attendance, I'd like, um, just a friendly addition of adding in a reference to, you know, approximately, I don't know what that number would be, I don't have a good judge, approximately 50 people attended, um, that were present at the meeting. But also, um, in the listing of people, and some of the people there by title, if they were actual speakers, I think that would make sense to list them, but it doesn't. I don't think, I think we need to reference why some people are listed by name and title, and some are not. So I would just ask for, just a reworking of that, please, and.
I think she's talking about where it says also present for Kim Cedar, and then David, David, and Lynn Ferris, and then Celia. And then there's a list of other people that I think were presenters, is that right? In the, on the.
Some of the senior staff are listed that didn't present or speak.
And then.
And, and then the speakers from, uh, the staff who spoke are listed with their titles.
Okay, and then members of the public present. I don't, I don't know if we need to exclude that line, because, because there was a bunch of people, we didn't include.
We included some.
Those are the people who spoke, yes.
Oh, those are the new ones, okay.
I just recorded the people who spoke.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but then maybe just indicate that, um.
Yeah, as public.
Under, and, and then maybe add.
Public present.
Go ahead.
Under the members of public present.
Yeah, who spoke during the public comment. Okay, I guess, and then, and then maybe it's there you add that in addition, you were, whatever your number is. For people, I just would like to acknowledge, you know, the people who were at the meeting. Sounds good. And then I would suggest that as it relates to public comment, that we identify people by their, their name, and if they represented either a title or, or what organization, you know, they were representing in public comment. And, um, and then just in general, um, the theme of what they talked about. Because I worry about representing what people said, and then people might question and say, I didn't say anything like that. So I would just want to keep it just in summary in public comment.
Um, I did like put in what they, what they, they were associated with, and, you know.
I think she's saying, instead of like summarizing what they're, what they're talking about, just, and I think this makes sense. Uh, just put their name, first and last name, and then like a, like a couple sentences, or a couple words on the, what they talked about, instead of like summarizing. Because the idea is that we may mischaracterize what they're saying in our public. And that it's in the.
I have the first and last name in the listing, like.
Yeah, I get that, I get that.
Do you want additionally come along?
Yeah.
For just that part?
You're thinking you want the most detailed?
Okay.
Yeah, I would think less detailed.
Want less detail about what they said directly?
Because the idea is that we're in, this is a summary, and it's getting more characterizing their comments.
It's quotes though, it's not characterizing.
Yeah.
Well, some are, yeah. I mean, same quote. I was like, I, I didn't feel like it was serious, they're not going to say that.
No, I know.
Okay.
I know, I won't say no. I would just like never mention the quote.
I would just think that if arguments could become really long, like they would, you know, capturing full comments of people. Summary quotes.
Yeah, I think so. If, if, if anybody else had any comments, strong feelings about that.
I would probably just say what topic they were speaking on, move it up. People can always watch the recording.
Okay, so that would be my preliminary, related to the minutes, and so I don't know if we need to see those again, or if we could put them with.
Are we okay with the motion to approve as amended, as amended, this would be?
A second.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Since when I speak to you?
Sorry. Um, alright, so next is the presentation on the budget.
Jennifer Perez, uh, I don't remember, I'll stop my head, but Director of Business and Administration will lead us through the budget presentation, you all have the memo. And then we can talk about it.
Alright, I'll give this up. So thank you for the opportunity to present an overview of the 2026 Staff Recommended Operating Budget, Operating Capital Budget for the Boulder Public Library District. It's been a long month of, uh, working on this budget, so we're, we're, we're glad we're here. Um, and hopefully we can get this approved tonight and move on. So, the presentation here, I'll go over strategic priorities for 2026, a revenue breakdown and allocation of the budget, some staffing changes and service adjustments that we had to make. Um, and then I have some kind of budget adjacent slides to go through, just to kind of, uh, show you how we've invested funds over the last three years, where we're gonna land at the end of this year, and then, uh, projected growth of reserves. So after multiple iterations, beginning in August, and thoughtful input from the Library District Board, staff leadership made difficult but necessary decisions to reduce certain services and staffing levels to finalize the recommended operating capital budget. We've come up with a budget that meets the board's goal of saving between 2.5 and 5% of revenues for future capital investment. A little more than $798,000 is, uh, of the projected revenues for next year. Were not appropriated, and this will result in an increase to the district's reserves. So while we contend with the pressures of flattening and declining revenues, these strategic priorities are even more relevant to meeting the board's long-term objectives. So the four are, um, we're gonna continue making data-driven decisions. The way patrons are using the library continues to evolve. Is that, is it?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Alright, um, continues to evolve. Um, and we're going to use data to evaluate current programs, identify process improvements for efficiency, and to help focus staffing levels. We're continuing to, uh, work on the culture here at the Boulder Public Library. And while we've made a lot of progress, we introduced a performance evaluation process. We've, uh, begun to have many trainings on inclusion, diversity, equity, and access, accessibility, and a whole lot more things. We've still got work to do. Um, we have, we feel like we have the professional development budget right for next year. It, we did, uh, take a reduction, but it still leaves enough room for staff to participate, um, equal to, to the levels that they have in the past two years. Plus, we're adding a leadership program for staff. And we're going to begin training some of our leaders on more systems thinking. The other thing we're gonna focus on is developing a wellness program. We're gonna continue to strengthen and grow community connections. A big project next year is our strategic plan, and we're gonna be working with the community. Did I do something?
No, it's me, sorry.
Um, working with the community to create strategic goals for the district for the next five years. Um, we're also going to continue to improve safety and efficiency of the facilities and spaces. We've, um, introduced a lot of preventative maintenance. Uh, we're going to be doing some upgrades to, uh, IT security, and we're also making a big change with our cleaning contract, which I'll talk about. So, uh, the next couple of slides will show the revenue breakdown and allocation of a budget that we're recommending. So this, uh, slide shows, uh, we're projecting $21,689,000 in revenues for next year. 98% of that $21 million is property tax revenue. And combined, um, interest, income, and other, other revenue, there's a box, um, covering part of my screen, um, uh, is the other portion of our budget, those two little slivers there. So in addition to those revenues coming in, we, we currently have in, in the bank, if you will, $3.1 million for capital fund, um, for a capital fund balance. So that's for fu- future capital needs. And we have $2.5 million in restricted reserves. So partway through the budget development process, the board set a goal that between 5 and 10% of revenues would be unallocated or go for one-time and minor capital projects. The purpose being, the district must plan for the future and have the funding to move, um, the Meadows Library in 2029, as well as other capital needs that might arise over the years. So the budget must, the future budgets must accommodate debt payments or, uh, payment of market leases, that sort of thing. So, and unlike this year, where we carried over like $3.4 million, uh, we are not requesting any carryover of unspent funds from this year to next year. So this is how the $20 million breaks down. So we have, um, allocated $20, $20,890,000 of the total revenues we expect to receive next year. And that leaves about 4%, $798,000 that will be unallocated and will flow into the fund balance. I'm gonna get this, because I can't see everything from my screen. So the largest piece of our budget is personnel costs. And so that black piece is all personnel costs across the system for every department, including benefits and other things that are, are go-to, um, staff development and that sort of thing. Uh, 1.7% of our budget, you know, we're contributing to capital projects. So we have, uh, planned a, um, an early literacy, an interactive early literacy installation for the main library's children's area. And we are doing a three-year lease for our server and network. Uh, facilities and maintenance, this is non-capital, this is, uh, utilities, cleaning, uh, grounds maintenance, fixing broken stuff, uh, furniture purchases, anything that goes to supporting how our facilities run is part, is 7.8% of the budget.
Sorry, did you say that was cleaning and security?
Um, security, uh, yes, I think security is in there.
That's, that's, I haven't heard of it.
Um, let's see. So 9%, we're, um, allocating to library materials, that includes digital streaming, um, items as well. Under programs and events, marketing and engagement, uh, we also include our literacy and outreach program funding there. And that's 2.3% of the budget. Uh, for administration, cafe and board governance, uh, 7.5% is allocated for those purposes. So some of the administrative costs are, uh, like office supplies for the system, uh, professional services like background checks, some of the things that we, um, we take form from HR that aren't considered direct, staffing costs, uh, any consultants or, um, service agreements for, for things that aren't related to IT or facilities go under administration. And then finally, uh, we have 6.7% um, uh, allocated to IT equipment and support. So, we're, we're taking a closer look at the previous slide's black piece of the pie. That is $13 million, $13,492,000. That's the total personnel budget. And I have it broken down by cost, so you can see, um, how that works. But, um, our, our, uh, staffing budget is, is currently 65% of the operating and capital budget combined. So salaries are 71% of that $13 million. We're, uh, recommending a 3% increase, pay increase for standard staff next year, that's 2.1%. Our Cigna health insurance is about 10%. Uh, the employer costs for par- the para pension are 11.9% of that staffing budget. Uh, vision and dental insurance are less than 1%. And other benefits, um, include things like our health, our employer costs for health spending account, lifestyle spending account, life insurance, long and short-term disability, ecopaths, leave administration, professional development, and workers' comp off of that, and that chunk. And then 1% for taxes.
Can you just make mention of taxes, and what kind of taxes would we be paying?
Uh, so we pay state tax, we pay, um, what is it? Medicare, Medicare tax. And we pay a very small amount of like, um, what do they call it? Occupational privilege tax for Denver, for employees who live in Denver. We have to pay a portion to them for that. It's like.
The head tax?
I don't know if it's head tax. I don't know what it's called specifically. But it's like, it amounts to like $500 a year total, so it's not a lot.
Have the employer had to be there for, for people to pay tax.
We consultant in the training about that, and they recommended that we just pay it, since it was such a small amount of money, and we didn't wanna, I just couldn't get in trouble.
Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna dig a little deeper on the staff benefits. So this year, we were able to get the cost for all benefits combined decreased by 8%. There's a, uh, several contributing factors to this. Um, we have a series of reductions we're making, so we're eliminating the foundation health clinic membership benefit. Staff who wish to continue to participate may elect to pay for it themselves through payroll deduction, they want to continue that membership. Our dental and vision premiums are decreasing this year, or next year, um, because we're changing the insurance carrier for those. And like I mentioned before, we, uh, we worked our professional development budget to align it with actual use, so that's being reduced by 38%, which equates to $110,000. Um, also, when the auditor completed the 2024 audit, they discovered we were overestimating employer contributions for para. It was, uh, an error in the payroll and systems calculation, so we had budget, we overbudgeted for that. And so, um, we corrected that, and, um, it wasn't changed though before the 2025 budget was finalized. So that adjustment also contributed to offsetting the cost increase. So I, uh, let's see, medical premium increase, so the increase for that was managed. I think if you remember when we talked about this in September, we were anticipating maybe an 18% increase in top medical costs, while our broker went to that for us and, um, got it down to like 9, 9 or 10%. And then we decided we'd change to a local network, which decreased even further. So depending on the plan you choose, it's a 6 or 8% increase.
What does that mean, what does that mean, a local network?
So more local doctors.
Okay.
Network.
Does that mean less coverage out there?
Potentially, yes. Um, also, the state mandated para employer's contribution is increasing again. Um, next year it'll be 15.8%, currently it's 14.8%. So even with those increases, we were able to, um, get an overall decrease in costs by 8%. Okay, so we have some.
Somebody in the waiting room.
Is there a question?
No, there was somebody in the waiting room.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, so for 2026, we have some new capital and one-time projects planned. Um, under capital is the interactive early literacy installation. We have also applied, so that is $100,000 of our budget, and we've applied for a matching grant from the Boulder Library Foundation for that. Uh, we're currently working on a project, I should say facilities, and working on a project to, um, redo the software and, uh, repair or replace some of the, um, valves and such for the HVAC system. And we're, we're gonna complete the main library probably early next year, and we're hoping to, um, add one or two branch libraries to this project next year. I mentioned also, we're renewing our network and server lease, that's a three-year lease. And we're also going to be purchasing some software and possibly equipment for ransomware protection. We have some one-time projects, uh, planned, so the district's strategic plan. Um, we anticipate doing a lot of the data analysis, community engagement, and that sort of thing in-house. But we do have a small amount of money set aside in case we need to bring in, um, professional data analysts or somebody to run focus groups and that sort of thing. We're, we're going to put a concerted effort into how we collect our data, how we structure that, and, and the analysis we do. Um, that goes under the, the, uh, the strategic goal about making data-driven decisions. We're planning a big, uh, website and calendar refresh project, that's, um, gonna be really exciting. And, um, then we're also participating in the Library Innovation Challenge through Colorado Smart Cities Alliance. And that is an open-ended innovation process for government procurement that removes the need to meet specific requirements and provides an open door to business and academic, academic innovators to propose new ways of solving a problem. And so we're participating next year with the Arapahoe Library District. And the challenge statement for that project is, "Public libraries offer far more than physical books. They provide access to digital collections, learning resources, cultural programs, and essential community services. Yet, these rich offerings often remain underutilized or invisible to patrons in real time. The challenge is to identify innovative, privacy-conscious ways to surface and promote the breadth of library services in ways that are accessible, intuitive, and engaging for all patrons." So we really feel like this dovetail, like say with a website and calendar refresh project.
Just, let's see, what, what's the cost of that? Where we pay to be part of it, or?
To begin, to be part of it, it's a $25,000 investment.
So we're putting into some, some institution, or it's just something?
Into the alliance, yes.
The ones?
Yeah.
Yes, most of this $215,000 cost, we have a website and calendar?
Yes, $250,000. Okay, uh, we have, we're expecting some new grants next year, which is always great news. So $160,000 has been requested from the Boulder Library Foundation. Another estimated $55,000 may be coming from endowments the foundation holds. And those estimated funds are not included in this chart, because I didn't know until today that they were confirmed. Those will support Boulder Reads, the Oral History Program, and youth programs. And I don't yet have details on how staff plans to use those funds. But I can tell you a little bit about what, what the other projects are. So, um, at the bottom there in the black, uh, portion, that's the, uh, matching grant for the interactive early literacy installation. We requested thirty-eight thousand dollars to support literacy program assistance. That's focused outreach, specifically focused on literacy. So paying somebody to drive the book bike around and hand out free books to the community. From the state of Colorado, we're expecting to receive thirty-five thousand dollars. That is designated for the collection. Also, six thousand dollars is expected from the Warner Charitable Trust, also dedicated to developing the collection. We asked for funds in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars for accessibility kits. And these are materials and supplies to better serve neurodivergent patrons and those who live with visual and hearing impairments. We're also requesting eleven thousand five hundred dollars to hire a professional archivist to help the staff team continue to develop certain collections that the library holds at the Carnegie Library. And then the foundation approved funding for another year of Boulder Reads. And that, a portion of that funding actually funds a staff position for the person who administers that program. So next, I'm going to get into the staffing and service adjustments. So this slide represents the most impactful and visible changes. There are details in the budget on, I think it's attachment A, that details each line item and what was reduced. These represent like visible things that patrons might notice are different. So we're currently in a hiring freeze. We have a handful of vacant positions that are contributing to that seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar savings. And so that means that we are reducing the number of full-time equivalents by five point three percent. So next year, we anticipate having a hundred and thirty-three point five full-time equivalent positions. What that means in terms of people is we're going from a hundred and fifty-nine thousand staff members to a hundred and fifty-four thousand staff members.
Some just.
Sorry, sorry. No. That's a bad roll, I guess.
What's the number for now?
Okay, it's a hundred and fifty-four people. I'm going to talk a little bit about the consular services contract, but we are planning to bring that contract in-house and add for FTE, and those are included in that hundred and thirty-three number. So the service changes that we are going to implement are, we're changing the hours of our call center to be open nine to three weekdays. The other times, there'll be a message and options for people to get information that they need or to receive a callback when we're not, when that call center is not open. We spoke to you, I think it was last month, about our plans to reduce the number of patron computers and replace some of them with lower-cost Google Chromebooks. So we're actually, I should say, the IT is actually working on that right now. And then we're also changing our service model for the Canyon Theater. So the theater will shift from a space that's been open to the public, similar to our meeting rooms, they could request and use a theater for their own events. And we're going to be focusing next year on hosting more library and community-led programs that will garner larger audiences. We've also made significant changes and reductions to our contract services. So we're eliminating custodial services contract, we're hiring some new staff, bringing all that in-house. The only things we'll contract out are like the major twice-a-year carpet cleanings that we do for the facilities. And that change will save us about eighty-seven thousand dollars in busy, seven thousand dollars. We've reduced the security guard services budget by forty-four percent. So we'll be covering the main library and the North Boulder Library with security guards all the open hours next year and reducing the security or eliminating security at Meadows, Reynolds, and Gun Barrel. That will save us three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And then we spoke to you last month about reducing costs for IT support. So some of these frozen positions will lead to reductions in software and computer needs for staff. And patron PCs will reduce the amount of the contracted services that we get from Focus Connect. I don't have a number yet because we're still making those changes. So that concludes the 2026 portion of the previous portion about the budget. The next few slides will show how we've invested funds across the different departments for the last few years. It'll give you a brief end-of-year forecast, and then it'll show you what we project in terms of profit reserves. So the next two slides are showing with the same data, just different ways. For 2023 and 2024, you're seeing actual expenses totals. They do not include the reimbursement that we made to the city of Boulder for running the library in 2023. I put those on there and then it made everything else disappear because it was so great. For 2025 and '26, it is the adjusted budget for this year and then the recommended budget for next year. So you can see that staffing costs, no matter what the budget is, are hovering around sixty-five percent of the budget. You can see in the first year of the district that we invested quite a bit in board governance, getting everything set up, all the policy work, and in IT equipment and support, building out our networks, getting everybody new computers. That's where our investment lied. Another thing to note is that the library materials budget is going up a little bit from eight point eight percent of our budget to nine point four percent of our budget. But you'll see on the next slide that we're actually spending less money on the collection. And I think that's pretty much the highlights from this slide. What's up?
At the Gun Barrel Library, like the shelves are pretty, you don't know. Like, we need more books.
That's the objective.
Yeah.
We want books in people's homes.
Yeah, so I just say.
Really?
Yeah, they're pretty, pretty bare.
I was there last night, you're right.
It's pretty sparse.
We have, we have two senior persons look back those other areas.
Okay.
Board books and something else, I can't.
Okay.
Beer mug.
Shovel there, bear.
You know.
Yeah. It's a particular area.
The children's, the children's book are picked over. There, so.
Okay.
It's good to see you, but also like, I thought it was filled with books the other day, so. Not that it's better that they check them out, but.
Yes. Yeah, well, we knew that was going to happen.
Yeah.
Happened at Nobo too. So.
Could you speak up, please, so I can't? Could you speak up, please?
Sure, sure. So as I mentioned, the staffing costs are hovering around sixty-five percent. Our goal is to continue to get those costs to a lower percentage of the operating budget. And over next year, we're hoping to get there through, mostly through attrition. Okay, so this shows the same information, but it gives you dollar amounts. So things to note here are the personnel, the personnel budget is going down from fourteen million this year to thirteen million next year. We're investing quite a lot in getting things up to speed with preventative maintenance and fixing things around our facility. So we're investing quite a lot of money in facilities this year. Next year, it's lower because we're just going to be taking care of what we have and hopefully not fixing as much stuff. The collection development budget is changing slightly, very slightly. And I think that's pretty much it in terms of major changes. The programs and events and marketing engagement budget, that total, including literacy and outreach, is reducing by a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Do these numbers include the grants?
No.
Okay.
No. Okay, that's that. So this and those two slides did not include capital. So this is our capital, how the capital budget is shaking out. So the first year, so when we budget, we budget under capital outlay. And then a few times during the year, we convert capital purchases into capital assets and we begin to depreciate them. So we started out with, I don't know, one point three million dollars in capital our first year. And we ended up moving capital assets out of capital outlay at one point two million dollars. And that's probably largely like the computer infrastructure costs. And so 2024, similarly, we had a quite a large budget, and most of it is under capital assets now. A large portion of that is probably like the Noble Library Playground and some other things that we've done at the Noble Library. This year, we have three point eight million dollars in capital outlay. A lot of that is for the Gun Barrel Library, so that'll move up to capital assets. We have the reconfiguration project of the second floor here at Main Library. We're going to ask you to approve the construction piece of that project budget later in the evening. And so that will change also. And then next year, almost no capital is planned for next year. The three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars that's there is that hundred thousand dollar investment in the interactive early literacy installation. And then the server leases and server network leases are such that they're considered capital, so they're budgeted there as well.
Is there any big, I guess, big maintenance projects, like?
Just the HVAC, controllers.
Is that in the three sixty-three or four?
No.
Okay.
There's, well, there's forty thousand dollars of that.
Okay. Well, it's in the.
Yeah, it's on our facilities. I don't exactly know how it's going to break out.
Okay.
It's just the budget for it, so. I think this is, that's it. All right, so at the end of this year, we are looking at a few projects that are going to continue into early next year. That's the main library HVAC controller project, the second floor reconfiguration here at the main library. And then we've been working over the past year on the web platform for the Carnegie's Digital Asset Management System was upgraded. And when we purchased that system.
The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
When we purchased that system, we did a lot of customization to make it really cool. So with that platform migration, we're having to kind of redo some of the customization. So we have the same functionality in the system. So that, that project is just begun and it will go into the early part of next year. And then I'm projecting at the end of this year about five hundred thousand dollars in salary savings that will flow into the fund balance. I think this is kind of small. So this just shows a picture of how our reserves are growing. So we started with that two point five million dollars in restricted reserves in 2023. We added three point one million dollars for capital in 2024. We're estimating that five hundred thousand dollars will flow into the fund balance from salary savings this year. And then the seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars that we did not allocate from the property tax revenues for next year will top it off at six point nine million dollars. So we're building a little bit of a nest egg for our strategic plan of the process of the project that we've been talking about for moving out of those library releases up in 2023.
I think. Good.
I'll check my facts.
Oh, yeah.
So, we have some questions.
Go ahead.
Can you talk a little more about the second floor reconfiguration project and what that looks like?
Yes, so we're replacing stacks in the nonfictionary stacks with all the nonfiction collections. So we're, we're refreshing that collection and reducing the size of it so we can introduce some more comfortable seating areas, put some seating and open up the windows. Part of that project also includes replacing the windows. Those were identified as needing replacement in that 2023 facility study that we had done. So we're replacing those. And then the other major part of that is to take the, I think it's public flight irons meeting room, which is pretty underutilized, and dividing it into three study rooms. Our study rooms here, we have two, are constantly used. And so we think this will be a better use of the space and that patrons will appreciate and use it more. We're also relocating the staff desk to a more secure vantage point. We'll continue to have security posted up there as well. So that's kind of an overview of that project.
They're cutting the, the staff. Yeah, it won't be as tall, so you can kind of see through. Yeah, I was just thinking about this fund balance. And, you know, I think we're going to need minimum without a new building, not building a building or anything, not purchasing any land, anywhere between eight and twelve million, you know, to do a Meadows project that the community will appreciate. So, you know, we're at four and a half. I mean, this says seven, but you have to take out the reserves. So we're at four and a half. And we need to get there by 2028 or 2029, is my guess. You know, also, you know, my other, you know, as we look at budgeting, you know, I won't be here forever, but we have to replace buildings, you know. All, what's the average age of our buildings? Over fifty years old, so, you know, buildings are going to need full refreshes, and that's going to cost money. So I think we always need to figure out what the right level of this reserve is.
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
So I, it might be, we've done a facility study in the past and it might be good to look at that maybe in the, you know, to give us an idea of what kind of operating budget we can run at, just to look at that again. Because I think just from a planning perspective, you know, this is kind of us with gut feel. And it'd be nice, I think, probably.
So last year, I prepared a capital improvement program.
Right.
Document for you. I have time to put that together for this year, but I do intend to bring it to you early next year. And that will include some of those things that we don't mention when we mention capital needs, like replacing the boilers here at the Main Library, replacement at George Reynolds Library. These kind of things are gonna come up, hopefully before they become emergencies. And yeah, you're right, we're gonna have a plan for them.
Yeah.
Doug, do you, I, I'm more than happy to talk about this more, if you want, enough for public hearing.
Sure, yeah, that's fine. That's probably a good idea. Okay, Andy, can you hand me the public hearing? Okay, thank you. Anyone online, raise your hand, and we'll do the in-person people first. And, and then we'll do the online people and Celia will get their names. So, okay, the first person we have for a public hearing is Lynn.
Oh, can I go later?
Okay, we only have two people, so we only have two people. The next.
I'll have one person to go on.
Uh, the next one is Beth. Yeah.
So am I talking about the budget or am I talking in general or both or?
You can talk about whatever you want, but this is about the budget.
Okay, okay, I'll do my best. I'm not a budget expert. I'm pretty horrified that sixty-five percent of the budget goes to personnel and nine percent goes to library materials. You know, what I see right now is you've got five, what I call, with all due respect, what I call browsing centers. You know, go to a branch, browse, look around, take a book home, you know? I just don't see a library. And there needs to be a library here, you know? And it's, we'll talk about furniture, we're gonna move furniture around, we're gonna reduce the collection upstairs so we can have more seating, so this can be a place to be, you know? I, I'm just not understanding it, you know? You know, you know, there's very few actual features that draw people in, you know? I mean, I would never challenge the early literacy program, God knows, you know? But it's just, you know, books on a shelf and, you know, come and, you know, see if something catches your eye. There's no real. I, I have trouble saying it, there's no real mesh of making a library. And I don't know, I'm not an expert on making a library. I just know it's not here, you know? It's not here. It's all talk about boilers and glass and, you know, and, and, you know, the, I'm gonna pull your words, the employee employer of choice because the minimum wage is twenty-two dollars an hour, I think that's really excessive. I'm sure that employees are delighted, I'm sure they are, but, you know, what is gonna happen? You know, it's, it's taking the entire budget. So, and I'll just say really quickly what I want, what I've been waiting for since way before the onset of the pandemic.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Just gonna step on my words, is interlibrary loan, you know? I need interlibrary loan. I'm seventy-four years old, I have research, I'm in, and I'd like to do it, you know, I'm still competent. And there's nothing here, no?
Uh, in three minutes, so thank you. I'll go to the next speaker, is anyone, Lynn?
To start with, the library hours, as we can see, is closing. Now, wherever I live, the library's been open. At night is when you wanna be, you can be inside, you know, not during the day. So where's, where's my three hundred and fifty dollars? I don't get it. You know, I paid six thousand dollars in property taxes. Three hundred and fifty dollars is one hell of a lot of money to be sticking it to me. I don't know. I'd like to see more inclusive bringing the community in, maybe instead of so many output, you know, to employees, to getting plans, to, you know, all of this. Maybe you could get some community members that you have to, you know, it's like jury duty, you have to do library. You know, kind of think of it like the South Old Rec Center, long, long term. Instead of being hit with, oh, no, we have no money and we have no rec center. And people are pissed off and they want their rec center and we haven't prepared it. So everything that goes into the library that caused the library district to have to come about to function well would, would not be there from the start, those pressures that we've been there. And we just be able to plan it accordingly and have everything work out. You have to do a lot of quantification, you have to use what's in this library, which is analyzing things and all the different uses and all of the materials go into it and all the longevity and the full life cycle analysis and energy, you know, that goes into everything and projected over time, that's what always gets problems, you know? Because suddenly, oops, time's up. You have to also look at, at the expenses in the terms of you're gonna have to tear this library down and build a new one at some point and include that from the very start. So it's not a nasty surprise when things fall apart. And that can be done, and it should be done in a library where people learn how to do stuff right so they're efficient, you know? What was I thinking wrong? I've got about sixteen hours of sleep in the last week and zero sleep last night. And, you know, a kidney stone and, you know, a lot of odds. Everybody has their odds, they're working all the time.
Okay, Lynn.
Can do.
You have three minutes.
Can do.
Can you introduce yourself real quick, just for the record?
Oh, yeah, Lynn Seagull, been here since eighty-seven, but I was also here in sixty to sixty-one.
And, can you introduce yourself?
I'm Beth Potter.
Thank you.
I've been millions, I've been here since seventy-four.
Thank you. Any speakers online?
I can't see any.
Okay, since we have our two speakers and no one else is online, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Yeah, there's all these people here, engage them so they all wanna talk. I don't get it. Nobody wants to see anything.
Maybe I'll give you three hundred and fifty dollars. I'll give it to you, okay? So talk to me after.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I'll bet it with you.
All right, well, I appreciate the comments in the gallery here, but we need to move on.
I agree with Lynn on the subject of property taxes. At this point, I'm paying for this money. And I, I just don't feel like I'm getting anything for it.
Thank you. Okay. Any more comment? Tim's interrupting us. Okay. Sure, I wouldn't, whether or not, but okay. Any other public hearing people? Okay, all right, public hearing's closed. And so, uh, now we'll discuss the budget, anybody have any comments or? Go ahead.
Doug, I have one question. We have to have a three percent Tabor reserve under the Colorado Constitution. Is that in the restricted reserve fund?
Yeah, that's the first thing.
We'll have to, for the state version, we'll have to identify it somewhere that there's every percent.
Can, can you address the group so we can hear that? They couldn't hear you.
Okay, sorry.
The Colorado Constitution requires a three percent Tabor reserve. So Tabor is a portion of the Constitution that deals with, what's it stand for? Taxpayer bill of rights. And that has to be maintained in the budget, but it is in there under that section designated restricted reserves. We just have to break it out separately when we file this with the state.
So if you don't use it, you have to get it back.
No.
You just keep it.
Oh, you can?
You can, well, you, you don't, you don't use it, you have to keep that three percent reserve year over year.
Yeah.
And it's, it's for emergencies, but there isn't any place that defines emergency, so we'll wait to see what that means exactly.
Okay, any trustees have comments on the budget? I can start or Tom?
I was just gonna follow up, kind of where we were ending up, where we were talking about the growth of the reserves and looking ahead to Meadows moving, et cetera. And I just wanted to put it in so it's on the record of this. Talking about the last time is we need to at some point probably speed up the conversation as to when we own the buildings. Because again, we're putting a lot of effort into this and the public doesn't appreciate it. All this capital expenses for buildings we don't own and we're planning for the future with buildings we own, so we can bond against them. And so we're doing it all as reserves.
I was, the point I'm making is that we don't own the buildings, the city owns the buildings. Besides the ones that we lease, Meadows and Gun Barrel we leased. The other three buildings plus Carnegie are owned by the city and yet we maintain. At some point in the intergovernmental relationship that created the district, we're gonna become the owners of that company. When we do, that's gonna allow budgeting and bonding and other things we can do. At the moment, all we can do to plan for the future, to the place you guys made, is to build up these reserves, knowing that we're gonna have a building we're gonna have to move here in three years. So.
Well, because we hope we will own the buildings, that's not a given.
It's not a given, right, we have to begin that process, yes.
The, it's not a given that we'll own the buildings. We will have to negotiate with the city to take over ownership if that is ever on the table.
Yeah, that, that's, I mean, I think that's the point that you were driving at, Doug, as well, and the public. It, it is, the budget is fine, but it's still alarming, the amount of money we're putting aside for capital next year. It's good that we have the seven hundred and ninety-eight or whatever that's going into reserve funding, but again, to use, things will go wrong. Like, we already have something that happened between, you know, the October meeting and now that potentially is gonna cost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I believe it's the responsibility of the landlord, the landlord still hasn't, you know, said, yeah, I'm gonna do it. So in other words, you can't just not do it. And this is the problem with having fifty-year-old buildings across the board. And we do not currently have a plan for how to replace any of them, right? I think that's what Doug was saying, just with Meadows, minimal cost, probably eight to twelve million dollars. Add Reynolds to a cost at some future date, add this building to the cost at some future date. We have to do, and it's not, we didn't give here by accident, right? We anticipated that the revenue increase for twenty twenty-six would be between one and one and a half million dollars. Instead, it's a reduction of about eight hundred thousand dollars. So it's two point three million dollar delta, which is why we're in the place we're in right now. We're looking at ways to still put aside money when in fact we're operating with two point something less than what we anticipated having. Now, twenty twenty-eight is the next time that that budget may adjust upwards. Lesson learned for twenty twenty-six. I don't think until we see the receipts from the county, we should be plotting and planning for any kind of increases to happen in that twenty eighteen, twenty-eight cycle. Maybe we'll see some, but we can't just be wishing and reading tea leaves and hoping that happens. We have to have a plan in the event that it doesn't happen.
I will go to, you know, in twenty twenty-four, the, the state reduced property taxes in, across Colorado by over a billion dollars, which resulted in about one million dollars less, maybe one point three million dollars less per year for the Boulder Library District. And so that money went back into taxpayers' pockets to, to spend how they want it. Or they got to keep it. And so, yeah, that's another part of the delta that we're looking at. I think, I think this is a good budget, you know? I hate to be cutting the budget in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. But I think the reductions we're making makes sense. The Canyon Theater, I think, while it, the public has really, I think, enjoyed reserving it, the public participation in those things has been pretty minimal. Some are great and some are, are not. You know, I walk by there a lot and there's a couple people in there, you know, you'd hope to see more. So I think that's a, a place that makes sense to, to cut back. Yeah, books, keep buying books, I'm glad we're staying at that level. Yeah, I don't have any more comments. I'm a little, you know, the, the change in the healthcare to a local network, did we, did we think that wouldn't impact most employees or when we made that change?
The, I forget exactly what the report is called, but we looked at that. And seventy-eight percent of the doctors that were seen in twenty twenty-five are included in the network, which is a really high amount, meaning you wanna get as close to a hundred as you can.
Okay.
And that was the single biggest factor that led to our ability to contain that cost.
Okay.
Bring it down from the last place it was, was it thirteen percent? That brought it down to the six to eight percent. So it was an important move.
So that's like seventy-five thousand dollars, yeah? Okay.
I can go next. I think the budget looks good overall, to Doug's points, we're down one percent in revenue, we're up three percent in inflation. Like, we're gonna have to make some cuts somewhere. I think it's good that we are setting aside the money we're setting aside. I know it's painfully good to those numbers, but I appreciate the work you guys put in to get us there. We're gonna be doing some of this again next year, because to David's point, we don't get more tax revenue probably for at least a few more years, then we'll see. And the inflation does not seem to be stopping. So I think we're gonna have to continue to be diligent in kind of how we apply the funds that we have, while also setting aside enough money to ensure we don't wind up in a situation in twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-nine where we lose a Meadows library and have no means of replacing it. So these are the trade-offs we have to deal with. I think it's kind of the right set of trade-offs. We didn't talk a ton about it. I did appreciate the work to try to insource the janitorial staff. I do think we can both save money and make them official library employees. That's always preferable to outsourcing, so thank you for those efforts. Medical costs are up a lot, I appreciate all the work that went into containing those. The place, the local network, I could see potentially biting focuses, people that have like out-of-state kits and college and things of that variety tends to be where that becomes a problem. But again, these are all about trade-offs and it's probably the right trade-off to be making. So overall, I'm happy with where the budget's at. I think we're not entirely out of the woods yet, but I think we're at least setting ourselves on a trajectory that lets us manage constrained spending for at least the next few years or until property values rebound.
Yeah, I agree with all that, I think.
I think, um, when we asked you all to cut, you know, between half a million and a million out of the budget, I was concerned about what that would look like. And I appreciate how sort of thoughtful and surgical the cuts were, um, to still get us to a place that we all feel more comfortable with. Because I know everyone in this room may not realize that we originally were at a budget that was gonna have, I think, $20,000 in buffer, um, in unallocated costs. And so that would've meant that, you know, one broken boiler put us in the red. Um, and so I really appreciate all of the work that went into this. But, and, you know, it feels super painful, but I, I think we landed in a good place. Um, and I appreciate that, that all of that effort. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo some of the comments I've heard from my fellow trustees. I think, one of the things I think about is the public library is that, you know, we were funded by taxpayer funding, um, since our inception, right? And so it's always been a publicly funded entity. I think becoming a district allows for the opportunity to really define the program and the operational side of the library in a much more strategic way with the, um, consistency of a budget that aligns with the needs of the community. I think the budget reflects a very strong responsiveness to the community and the learnings that we've gained in Bena District and understanding the limits of benefits and costs and return on investment. So I, I really do appreciate the thoughtfulness and the attention to caring about why we became a district and what the investment means for taxpayers and being responsible for, um, the dollars that are invested in the district.
Sylvia?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, hello, everyone. Um, I am joining today from Durant, Oklahoma, where I am, uh, at for work. Um, I, you know, I think, I, I wanna repeat what everyone has said, just in thinking, uh, David and the staff, and being nimble enough to adapt when we said we wanna, you know, we need to reduce the budget even, uh, smaller than what we originally talked about. Um, and I appreciate that we didn't just make cuts to make cuts. Those cuts were carefully considered, dissected. We very, you know, we looked at each of those, uh, departments and sections very carefully um, and arrived at where we are today. So I, I think it's a good budget just based upon, um, you know, knowing that we made some decisions that are hard decisions, that obviously we wish we had, um, you know, more funding to do certain things. But I think I, you know, personally, I feel like we, um, we're making the, the best decisions for the district, um, with this budget.
Thanks.
Yeah, before you call, I just wanna say, um, thanks for the feedback. Um, it is, I mean, and I, and again, so we did this at the last meeting, but for clarity, um, this is a reduction. It is a reduction in staffing. It is a reduction in service levels. It is a reduction of some services that have belonged here. Uh, there's also a reduction in terms of benefits eligible. We can go back and forth on how well utilized some of those benefits were, but a reduction of some of the benefits that we had. So that is the budget we have for you. I, I think Andy is correct in saying we are not out of the woods yet. Um, I don't think probably next year is even the last year. I don't think we'll be out of the woods next year either. Um, I think, uh, there are a lot of sobering signs regarding the economy, regarding inflation. Um, I don't believe, uh, the legislature's gonna make big changes in an election year to suddenly restore property taxes. I think that would be a non-updoor thing. So I think, I think you're gonna see a vast increase in the property tax collection in the next few years. So we have some hard decisions right in front of us. This is, I hope, I doubt that this is what any of you signed up to do, uh, but I appreciate, um, the work that you've done. And we all kind of got on in the house the other days. And now it's, uh, now we have to make some adjustments to get back on track.
Let me just follow up on that, David, because I think one of the things we need to keep this in, in a perspective. But yes, we, we, you did a great job, in particular, Doug. And it's a reality, we have less to spend. We are way ahead of where we were as a community before the district.
Before the what?
Before the district, before we were a district. We have two brand-new libraries we're gonna have. We are double the size almost in terms of the staff we put out to serve the community. We've expanded the collection, we've done unlock. And I think we need to keep that in context. It was because we became a district, because those revenues came, because people showed up to figure out how to spend this in a way to serve the community. And so, yeah, we're gonna pull back a little bit, but we're way ahead of where we started.
Yeah. Good point, Tom. And we are spending, I mean, just because of the, we're spending twice, nearly twice as much on books than we ever spent. So that is something, and further in the cap, like, we should be proud of the fact that we doubled the amount of money going to the resources that we put in the collection and make available to the public for free. Um, the 9% reflects just the material cost of the items. Uh, there's a whole team, uh, behind that work, uh, which vastly increases the cost. And so it is about a little under 15% of the overall expenditures of the budget is devoted solely to putting books really on the shelf, the right books on the shelf for the public. A whole bunch of other staff members spend their time recommending books, uh, finding the right books to put on display. So that is the.
Should I call? Your recording?
Call, call her, put her on speaker. Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Hopefully I, I might need your battery pack if anyone. Sylvia. Oh, thanks.
Assuming you have a, you might relish.
I have a.
Yeah, I don't know.
It has a USB C hub.
No, it has the lights.
90 is 48049.
Hi, Sylvia.
53449.
Our zoom is still down, so we're gonna resume the meeting with you on speaker vote, is that okay?
No, that's not fine.
Okay. And if we get our zoom back up, I'll let you know. Okay, so, meeting's back in order. Um, where were we? David, you were talking.
I'm, I was finished.
Okay. So is there any more discussion about the budget? Uh, I'll say, I talked to Nadine and she said she approves of, you know, she's not here, she can't vote, but she liked budget and she approves of it. I'm not, I mean, like, she's, uh, traveling today, you know, for work. Um, okay. So we have a motion to, uh, a resolution here to approve the budget. Do I need to read the whole thing or?
No.
Okay.
We do need to, okay, one of the resolutions has Nadine's name on it. We'll update that to take her off.
Yeah, we'll have this as a, oh, okay, that's not this one. So I'm gonna call this, uh, Resolution 25, 225-1118. And this will be the resolution to approve. It's on page 34 of your packet.
I approve approval of the 2026 budget as presented this evening.
Okay, yeah, I think we're gonna move, we should move to approve the resolution.
No, approve the resolution.
2511-18.
Related 2511-18.
Right.
Related to the 2026 proposed budget.
And second it. Okay, all in favor of approving the budget, say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries and the budget is approved. And so that's what we mainly need to do. We've still got other business. Um, and I, my agenda is somewhere stuck here, so what's the next on our agenda? Oh, thank you. Um, Treasury report. Doug, we're skipping Treasury report, okay?
We spent all the money.
We spent it. Well, I hope somebody contacts the, the woman here that spoke about finding books, because I feel like we can.
That's in frequently, I can speak with her.
Yeah, okay. Feel like we have plenty of books. Um, director's update, second floor renovation construction services contract.
Yeah, some people need your approval until now. You have in the packet the construction contract, uh, for second floor renovation in the amount of roughly $300,000, as Jennifer mentioned. 28%, 25% of that is for window replacement that we identified back in 2023. Is in need of being done. The rest of it is for, um, converting the flatiron to a thing. And then there's probably another 15% of the cost is for electrical work.
So you said 25% is what?
25% of the cost of the construction, $300,000 construction cost, I think, is related to the window replacement.
Oh, they're, you're replacing some windows, okay.
Yeah, uh, windows that face out towards the playground from the second floor.
Okay.
They're foggy, the seals are filled.
Seal, okay.
Quite some time.
And I thought this project was originally, uh, we estimated like a half a million, but did we re-scope any of it or?
We did re-scope the contract down somewhat. I mean, it was initially, we projected around $700,000.
Okay.
$50,000, so it's less than that. Still, we have to buy shelves, estimate the cost for those to be about $80,000 or $100,000. So the total project all in will be about half of what we originally estimated. The total project all in will be about half of what we originally estimated.
Yeah. What, um, when will this happen, this work?
Uh, this winter, right, so then soon. Um, the time for delivery on the windows, which is always the critical thing, I think is four to six weeks.
Okay. And the, will that require just that kind of main Adrian part of the second floor will be shut down or?
Uh, it's not the Adrian, I think we can move the desk. Those things can be done. Though we're planning on doing most of that work in-house. Uh, we will have to close the area of the nonfiction stacks for a period of time. I don't know if that's a week. I don't know that I've seen a estimate, I mean, a week, two weeks. Yes, they can only touch the shelf and disassemble the shelving, put a new shelf, but it's all back in the shelf.
We are out to bid for that project, that part of the project right now. So once we select a, a vendor to do the move and then also.
We can't hear you.
You gotta speak real loud, sorry.
Okay.
Since we got Sylvia on the, on the phone.
So we're out to bid for the shelving and book moving part of the project. And once we identify a vendor, then we'll have a, a timeline.
Okay.
This could be like an SNL bit with everybody talking in hushed library tones. So, or something, sorry.
This is all current year budget that we're using to pick this? And some of that budget will then presumably be encumbered into next year? Because we're not actually paying these bills right now?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, this is a long time coming. This is like one of our first, we talked about this in the first year. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the job contract for $300,281.
Second.
I guess, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. David, your second item?
And, uh, I'm gonna let Jennifer do this one.
I haven't looked at it since I wrote it. But basically.
Adrian was on earlier, but she, she not.
So I just provided some information about the process.
What page is that? What page is that?
Uh, certified. From the point where the valuation happens, the, uh, appeals happen, then we get our, so we get a, um, an estimated value of our, uh, property taxes, which we calculate the property tax revenue from in May. We received that this year and we received a second one in August. And that one was, um, $200,000 less than was projected in May. Um, and then in December, we get the final certified amount. So we haven't received that yet. That'll come on the 10th. Um, so there's, there's not a definite number. Um, what goes into that estimate is that there's a 1.5% assessors fee that is taken from the revenues. And then we have to account for some, um, unpaid taxes and abatements. We can apply to receive, uh, refund on some of those abatements. But as of now, we haven't done that. We're gonna do that this year. We don't know how much we'll receive, uh, for that. And so, like you asked for last time, Doug, a, a set number, we, there's no way to get.
I get it, I understand.
So our, our plan is, when we get that May number, to carve out a chunk of probably at least $500,000 that we wouldn't allocate to anything or make any plans for, because that will go to the fees and any kind of abatements. Uh, abatements were high, higher this year than they had been in the past two years. Um, so those, right now, we have, uh, projected at 1%. They were less than that in '24, so, um, that's where we are now.
No, I, I, I read it, I appreciate the, the work you guys put in to figure.
I didn't do any of it.
Or Adriana?
I just wrote it.
I think it's gonna help us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just say, I do pass along our thanks to Adriana. I know it's a lot of work to get here. I do think this is super important going forward. I mean, we did get a little bit lucky this year in that we underestimated this and we just happened to have enough money that it wasn't a disaster. So I mean, again, growing pains, right? We're a new district. We've never had to calculate how property taxes work before, and now we do. But I think it is good for us to have an understanding of this. I do think we might wanna consider how we ultimately represent this in the budget. Like, I do think it is good for us to show the treasurer's fee in the budget. I would consider even showing like the abatement estimate in the budget just to kind of show folks how we get from the money that they pay in property taxes down to the amount of money that the library ultimately has. So, I, nothing we need to change right now, but it might just be worth kind of thinking about how we wanna express this in future years as we're trying to show the public a budget and let everyone connect these numbers. I would, I think it's just useful to show the pipeline of, we start with this much money and this is where it gets carved out. And ultimately, the library has this much left to spend and here's how we're spending it. So. Um, but otherwise, yes, thank you. I appreciate this work. I'm glad we're getting to the point of understanding this. And personally, I'm glad I now have some understanding of this and appreciate the work that went into facilitating that.
Yeah, and all three of us, um, have made notes in our calendar, so like, look at these things and consider these amounts. So we're not really missing next year.
So I have just a question about this treasurer's fee. So that, that, did we just not, was that fee, like a fee last year too?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just didn't remember seeing. And what are the, I mean, what's the, and so does everybody, every entity has the same 1.5 treasurer's fee?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Everyone who taxes, who does property taxes.
And last year, we earned more revenue than we projected and so it offset the fee that we didn't account for. That's why we had money left over to carry.
We, we forgot this fee in past years, which is why we haven't seen it before. Um, we are now accounting for it appropriately.
We were calculating it as net revenue. Now we're gross revenue. Now, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So we were saying, here's what the bank account says and that's how much we know. So we were, we, we didn't, we saw it, but it was in a net figure.
Did they take that off the top?
They take it off the top.
Before.
Is it set by the state?
It comes out every, every month or every, they, they check every so often when they have enough money to do that. And then it comes out of that little attempting. So the library district gets a check for X dollars and that one and a half has already been taken out of there. So you don't, you don't see it as a, as a, a single number someplace. It's easy to not recognize.
But we'll track it differently. And the bulk of the checks come between March and July. And, uh, the bulk of the money that the district receives comes between March and July. We'll just have to track each month.
I see. That's quite a fee for a treasurer's office. I was like, does anybody look at that?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Can we ask them to pass it? Because 300,000, but think about the EDSD, they're 550 million and they have the same 1.5%.
I know, but I'm like saying, like, that's a lot for a treasurer's office. I mean, what is, what, where's the?
Subaccountants.
Transparency there?
I guess you can show up at their public meetings in the house.
I wonder if they have that in their budget. I, I may. That's just, that's an incredible fee. A flat fee. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to learn more. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to learn more.
Yeah. Next year's gonna be different because the property tax assessment rates change. They reduce for commercial properties, I believe, they increase for residential properties. There's some homestead exemptions. So it's gonna be, I'm sure they're gonna have fun over there at the treasures. They get to earn their fee, I guess, this year, I'm sure.
There are exemptions every year and instead, I mean, and I, we said unpaid, it's uncollected taxes. I don't know that we, can't say unpaid taxes.
Yeah.
There are taxes that are not collected. And so that is what we're paying that fee for is for the collection of those taxes.
Yeah.
You can begrudge it all you want, but there has to be some mechanism by which that money is collected and then accounted for and distributed to the library.
Okay. Sylvia, anything from you, I can't see you, but?
No, I would jump in, that's me, P.
Okay, thank you, please do.
Thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Okay. Library Foundation, thank you for the grants that you're going to make to the library and all the hard work you've done to find those grants.
Well, thank you all for your participation and support. Everybody in the service about how to roll in the success of the Library Foundation, which only helps us help the library. Wanted to say that a project we've been working on all year finally came to fruition and that was getting the IRS to qualify us for Colorado Gift Day for the first time in our 51-year history. So, and then today I found out from a longtime generous donor that they've offered to match every gift between now and December 9th up to $15,000. So I'm here to announce, we are signed up. If you're familiar with Colorado Gift Day, it makes it really easy. Just search for us, make your gift that way. And that will directly go into the grant that we are able to fund early next year according to your requests. So that's good news. Wanted to put a little spotlight on Carnegie and your wonderful staff over there, who are like my little fundraising elves. But we have a very satisfied, happy patron who's the former editorial page editor of the Daily Camera, Glennis McPhinney, has given a $50,000 gift in honor of the man who hired her, Lori Paddock. We have the Lori Paddock collection at Carnegie. And after being given a thorough tour of all the archives that had Glennis McPhinney's name on them, we have the Daily Camera archive there, it was very extensive, including her marriage announcement. She did decide to open up an endowment for the benefit generally of the archives in the name of Lori Paddock, who was actually the editor of Meredith's when I was a cover reporter at the Daily Camera 20-plus years ago. So that's fun. And then also, kudos to this library for somehow hanging on to the Carnegie name with your archive all this time, since 1907. Because Carnegie, under Carnegie, funded, you know, 2,500 libraries across the country in like a decade or two span, at the turn of the last century, late 1800s, early 1900s. 1,500 of those 2,500 had hung on to the Carnegie name somehow. And for that, the Carnegie Corporation of New York is celebrating by giving each of them $10,000 come January, including us. And so that'll also go for the general benefit of the Carnegie Archives. The point they're making is that they're marking the 250th anniversary of our country and saying, hey, libraries and democracy belong together, yay, libraries. So, little spotlight on Carnegie there. And then, just wanted to mention that I had mentioned before that our board president and I would be highlighted on a national webinar. We did that in the room next door earlier last week. It was billed as an expert webinar, our, starting the second lifecycle of the Library Foundation. So it was nice to be recognized by our peers across the country for the work we're doing. And then finally, we have a new donor series and we'll be highlighting the work of Boulder Rights and Emily Reynolds. So anyone who's given to us this year is welcome on December 19th for a new donor series called Check It Out. And we'll be here at Main Library at nine o'clock when Library opens, hearing from Emily. And the intention is that every quarter, our donors are able to come in, hear from someone doing something cool here at the Boulder Library. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. Also, before we keep going, I want to thank all the staff for coming and also thank you for all your hard work in the year. You know, I think the board can speak for them, I think we're all very pleased with how you guys are doing and thank you for coming to our meeting and thank you for being part of it. Trustee matters.
Yeah, a couple of items. So Sylvia and I spent a little bit of time between the last meeting and this one interviewing various law firms to help educate and represent us for, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Benita. Benita and I, I'm sorry. I just default to Sylvia when I'm thinking about lawyers. Sorry Sylvia. Benita and I interviewed a couple of law firms to kind of help both represent and then educate us primarily at this stage about how we would go about the forthcoming union negotiations. We have a recommendation to retain a specific one of those firms. They are the same firm that has been representing Jeffco. They're a little bit more expensive than the Employers Council that we talked to, but we think overall, they're probably better positioned to help quickly get us up to speed on what we're gonna need to understand in terms of Colorado law on this subject and everything else that's gonna come into play as we start to think about how we want to go about addressing this and structuring any negotiations to come after. So I think we just need a motion, I mean, I haven't answered questions about any of this, but I think ultimately what we want to get to here is a motion to retain counsel. We would basically scope this work as just up until the point we make a decision about whether or not to recognize a collective bargaining partner. If we do decide to recognize a collective bargaining partner, we would then have to enter into some other scope of contract to actually represent us in negotiations. We might explore additional law firms at that time. But I think we're probably looking at 20 hours or so of legal work between now and then, primarily to answer our questions about the confines of Colorado law on this topic and just kind of help us think through how we might address this.
So Benita and I talked about this the other day and I talked to Doug a little bit about it too. I'm okay on hiring counsel if the scope of it is to be there for legal expertise around labor law that we don't hold. So it's sort of just how you described it, so.
Yeah.
We may never get to that other place.
That would be the goal at this point, like if and when we get to the point-
And to limit the amount about it.
Yes, I think our goal here is to try to be as efficient as possible, but at the same time, there is a bunch of Colorado law on this topic that we are going to need to better understand and we would be retaining counsel to help educate us on that topic.
Yeah, but it will not include their opinion about other things related. It's just on our request, questions about-
Yes, we would, they would work as we instruct them to work.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm thinking the initial instruction we would do here is basically, assuming we do decide to engage counsel, we'll go through the work of getting that paperwork set up here in the next week. But I think the first thing we would probably do is send them a list of initial questions we have to kind of get us a memo on, just briefing on the initial subjects since we're going to be discussing this topic again in early December.
So what do you need, a motion to?
I think we need a-
Do we have a name of the firm or lawyer?
Yes.
Sorry.
We do, we have all of those things. They're in the email I sent, let me hold up.
Oh, okay.
And are we still planning the December 2nd meeting?
Yes, I was gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Yes, so this would be the specific attorney in this case that we talked to is Tammy Cocker of Fisher Phillips is the firm. So we would be engaging the firm, but she would be their primary representation. There's a few, you know, if she can find someone cheaper to answer our question, she will. But she would be our primary point of contact.
Right. And she also, you mentioned Jefferson County, but she is also working with Boulder County as well.
Yeah, she works on both, yeah.
Okay, so, I see.
What I'll do is, I mean, if we, basically if we, what we basically need to do is get an engagement letter from her that you'll ultimately need to sign, but I think we should take the vote now because we want to get this done between now and the December meeting, so.
So, can you make the motion because you have a name?
Yes, so the motion would be to engage Fisher Phillips and their attorney Tammy Cocker to advise the Library District Board on matters related to Colorado employment law and our potential interactions with a future union.
Second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
You don't need a contract, you will need a scope of work and a letter.
Yep.
Yeah. They should give us an engagement letter.
I'll reach out to her and tell her to prepare the engagement letter and all of that. I wanted to make sure we had folks on board first, but I, Benita and I can follow up with her this week and get that done. And I assume then Doug, it'll ultimately be, you have to sign it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can you send me her contact information so we get her set up to pay?
Yep. Do you want me just to copy you on my next email?
Go ahead, Tom.
So I'm curious what we think we're doing on the second, about this.
Yeah, I don't, you mean with the lawyer, with respect to the lawyer or?
Well, as it relates to the employees coming to us with the policy, you know, our conversation we just had with them.
So maybe you could give us an update first on your meeting.
Yeah, that'd be good, just a second. Go ahead, you want me to?
Yeah.
Let me, let me, let's talk about the second, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, we met with the employees and their representative for ASME. And as I summarized before, I think we told, you know, their right to join a union was, they had the right to do that under Colorado law and, sorry, I don't-
Breathing on me?
Yes. Me too. I'm way past contagious, I think.
Awesome.
Sorry. I'll look up in the air. So we said, of course, they have the right to join a union and, or any employee organization, or they have the right to not do that, that's part of Colorado law. They have the right to be represented by an organization of their choice. And that they're, you know, that according to our understanding of Colorado law, that their right to do that, you know, is irrespective of the Boulder Libraries' opinion on it or the Board's opinion on it. And they agreed with that, I think, I'm speaking for them. And then we talked, I'll just go look through my notes here. We also discussed, let's see. Give me two seconds.
I can pick it up if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we asked questions about what was behind the motivation for it. We discovered there really aren't any grievances about it. In fact, it's mostly, they think that this, we have a Board are doing well, the library as a district is doing well, and they see unionizing as their means of helping protect that into the future, knowing that we might not always be the same Board and Boards in the future might not feel the same way. And I think that was a key takeaway for me. They presented us with, or the ASME representative presented us with a slightly revised or at least color-coded version of the policy that we saw previously. We talked about it and Doug and I both explained that we thought, in our own opinions, not in standing on the Board, but our read of the Board was at the moment they didn't have four votes on the Board for collective bargaining or four votes on the Board for that particular policy and they needed to be open to the idea that we're gonna want to amend it. We had a little back and forth with the ASME rep over that as to what would really be part of negotiations. Vance, Doug used the example of a term sheet. But our sense of us was that to move forward with the idea and creating a policy, because what we're really doing is creating a policy for what this district will do around collective bargaining going forward, separate from this union's request to us to enter into collective bargaining. So we have that policy decision to make first, is that we needed to know the categories are more specifics. And Doug used the phrase, the term sheet. He didn't particularly like that idea, but as, by the end of the conversation, I think he-
The ASME person?
ASME.
Yeah.
Came around to the understanding of it that this is the first time they've organized a district, we're a unique entity and we have strong opinions about this, not opposed to collective bargaining, but in terms of protecting the fiduciary responsibilities we have. Doug get it?
I think that's good, yeah. Yeah, and so what I would see is, on the second, I think, I'm kind of open to hear your comments about that because I think one thing we need to do is give them formal feedback on the policy that they presented. And then I think the other thing, from my view, is, as a Board, and this is open for discussion, is determining, you know, if we don't accept that apology, is there a policy that we would, or should we put together a, or maybe Tom and I go back to helping create another policy under which any organization, employee organization, who wanted to collectively bargain with the library would utilize. So that would be, you know, a question for the Board, in my mind of, is that something that the Board would want to take up? And I think that would be something we might want to discuss on the second.
Can I ask if the people that you met with, are they here at the meeting tonight?
Rachel.
She was back.
Rachel's here and Karen is back here.
Okay.
Sarah was on Zoom, but-
Yeah, what was, sorry, what was her name?
Marissa.
Marissa, yeah. And then Sean from ASME.
So is the thinking that between now and the meeting on the second, we would be getting some expert advice from our legal counsel so that we're equipped to have that conversation on the second?
My hope would be between now and the second, we are at least able to get some of our fundamental questions answered just about how the Colorado law works on this topic.
This is why I wanted to ask what we were gonna do that day, because after we had talked that day, I thought we were slowing down doing anything on the second.
Yeah.
Just in terms of having time to do.
I don't know if we'll necessarily have all our legal questions answered by the second.
Yeah, and so I'm a little-
So is the thinking that some of that meeting would be getting more questions answered?
Yeah, getting questions or being in the conversation amongst ourselves as to what we, you know, where we want to go with this. I was very forthright with Karen and the others that I don't think this is gonna move fast. And I think that we, I don't think we need to move fast as a Board. So, here we are tonight, we're gonna be back on the second. We've got a holiday in between. I don't have a ton of time, but I would like to at least be, I think, have the opportunity for you and I to brainstorm around that document and maybe have another round of conversations with Karen Smallbrook before we meet as a Board.
Yeah, but before, after the second or in the new year, yeah, maybe. I think, go ahead.
I mean, I agree that there's not a lot of working time between now and the second, so I don't anticipate us being radically beyond where we are today other than maybe having engaged legal counsel and gotten some questions answered. I also agree that I don't know that we're gonna pass a policy on the second. I think we're a little ways away from doing the work that needs to be done on that topic.
I mean, I can't see, even if I'm a-
But I mean, I think that's what we use the second for then, is to discuss in a little more depth what we actually think the contours of such a policy would look like.
It's more like a work session.
It might even be, that's the session where we come up with the questions for the lawyer.
Yeah, I mean, I, so mindful of the amount of money we'll be spending on lawyers, I do think the sooner we can deal with this, the better. So I don't think it behooves us to go slower than is necessary, but I do think we, you know, we're gonna need to take some intentional steps here.
Yeah, but I mean, to that point, like I think us having a very tight list of questions that we've talked amongst ourselves and we want answers to and sending them to them, that's the costly, efficient way to deal with a lawyer, not, we're not putting them on a tater, we're gonna be on an hourly basis with them. And so rather than over the next couple of weeks, we're each firing off different questions, if we use the second for us to come in and say, here are the things that we need answers for in terms of labor law, before we move to the next step to think about how do we frame a policy. We can take, you know, we could take their, the policy they brought to us if they wanted to that day and vote it up or down, I think it would be voted down. But first, we need to answer from lawyers as to, if we bring that up, are we triggering anything that we're not aware of, right? So I think, I would want to table that, have a discussion about what we need to understand, get those answers and then move to the next round of conversation about their request to be recognized as a collective bargaining unit in January.
And I think Tom's point about timing is not necessarily, it's more of a function of, we can only work when we're in a public meeting. And so, and so, you know, we have one, if we call special meetings, we can do, you know, we're gonna have a special meeting for this in December, but, you know, realistically- to have a special meeting for this in December, but, you know, realistically, you know, because we're all volunteers, and that's an additional Tuesday night of our lives, you know, we're only going to meet so many times, and so just the ability for us to get together and hash out these things as a, as a board, in, in conjunction with Colorado law, is limited. I think that's, I think that's what you're meaning by that, but yeah. Yeah, so I would think, so that, you know, I, I was struggling, and I apologize, I'm not fully prepared on, on how the second will go, like, I guess, should we, would you guys feel comfortable if staff gave some comments, or maybe a, like, a public comment, or?
We definitely want public comment.
Okay.
I mean, we've heard from staff once, I don't, if staff feels like they have additional things they would like to share, I'm happy to allocate them time, if it's, you know, what we've already heard, then.
Yeah.
Maybe we don't need to sit through the second time.
Do you mean now?
No, no, no.
Or in the meeting?
On the second.
Okay.
Yeah, give them some time to speak.
Well, we'd have, we have to have public comment.
No, we don't have to have public comment, but it's optional, but.
It's a special meeting?
But I mean, but we could also not have public comment, and just give them time to speak, you know. I don't know, you know, the other piece is on, on the policy, I think, part of the meeting, you know, I do think, we haven't discussed this as a board, but I think the board, I guess we have discussed this as a board, but I think most people's feelings are, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, that it's the board's prerogative to set policy for the library district. And so, any policy that we do adopt, I think, would be the board's adopted policy, and that, and that also, this hasn't been done before, so we're kind of breaking new ground in the state of Colorado, with respect to library districts. Yeah, I don't know.
So we, we'd still be having a meeting on the 16th?
Correct, we have to be then, because that's another matter for the trustees, we have to discuss, is, I think you need to report on the director stuff, but yeah, we're still meeting on the sixteenth, we still have, all of our meetings, monthly meetings are, are planned, so we have agendas for those, and things we need to cover.
So I was just thinking about, like, if we were using the second for a, sort of a work session type thing, what would the due date be for the attorney, and how does it help us if the 16th is full of other stuff? Would we be waiting till January to get feedback?
I think we might have to go on an executive session on the 16th, maybe if we had feedback in a memo format.
Do an executive session on the second as well.
We could, yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll stop.
I mean, to Tom's point, I think there's two ways we could hire the lawyer, I mean, we can, we'll definitely engage her between now and then. Now, we could engage her and do nothing else, and then she would attend the meeting on the second, or not, and we can decide what we want to do with that, but.
We did talk with her about that, about coming to a meeting, being in person, being able to advise us.
Yep, yep, and there's a couple of things we could do, I mean, if we don't want her to attend, we'd send her a list of questions afterwards, if we do want her to attend, she could attend and watch, or we could ask her to present for us on, you know, an overview of Colorado law on this topic. To Doug's point, that, you know, the Colorado law on this topic is new, it's two or three years old, no library district's ever done this before.
Oh, it was really clear when we were in this conversation, we had interpretations, and Sean had interpretations.
Part of the reason we need a lawyer is because nobody actually knows what the law here is, and we'd prefer to find out without, you know, spending $5 million and three years in lawsuits, so that's the goal. That's the expensive outcome. The non-expensive outcome is anything else, so I think that's ultimately what we're trying to work toward here, but yeah, I mean, I, let me know what you guys want to hear, we can instruct our attorney as we see fit, and I think it's a matter of, would you rather have the meeting on the second with her present or not, and if she is present, would you like her there to present something? I also imagine we could get her to answer a set of questions between now and then, even though it's a short turnaround, we'd have to, I'd have you guys send me all your questions, and I'd correlate it into a set of what we want to get answered between now and then via memo.
I think we should make that decision. Go ahead, Sylvia.
And he, oh yeah, so I'm just, so in order for us to do all of that with this new attorney, obviously, we've got to get the engagement letter, get that signed, obviously, I mean, as a lawyer, I don't, he's going to be comfortable doing work for us until we get that signed.
Yep.
So what's the, what's the anticipated turnaround of making that happen?
I think we'll have it signed by the end of the week.
Okay.
I mean, ideally tomorrow, if I can get ahold of Doug, but yes, I, I think, we, when we talked to her before, she made it clear she was available to work on this quickly, so.
Okay, and, and I guess, I mean, and I don't know how the other, I would like to see the engagement letter, just, just not to like weigh in, or like whatever, but I would like to at least see a copy of it, just in case.
Okay, well, that's the case.
Looking for it signed?
Presumably, yes.
That's usually not that long.
Sylvia, what I'll do is, I'll reach out to her tonight and ask for an engagement letter, I'll kind of express the scope, as we've discussed it here, I assume we'll get that letter tomorrow, I will circulate it to the whole board, and anyone who wants to weigh in, I guess, get back to us by Thursday or so, but I, I think our goal should be to have it signed by Friday.
Yeah, and, and I think we can get questions to her by, you know, next week, and.
Yeah, if we got questions to her by next Monday or so, then.
I know.
I think we would get answers by a week later.
But we can start.
And then the week.
I mean, we, I, I guess the question is, we, we, do we want her to come on the second?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the immediate question, is do you want to come on the second, and do we want to ask for any work between now and then?
What do you think?
Well, I, I mean, I said my piece, I think we should ask the board's permission to have another round of conversations, and I think we should engage the lawyer, I think we should start thinking about questions, I think we should get permission to engage in another round, and put off till January, till we bring the lawyer with us.
Okay. Yeah, I don't necessarily think she needs to be there on the second, maybe, maybe by the 16th, we'll have the questions formulated. I think we, from my view, we can reserve time for an executive, if I'm putting together the agenda in my head, we'll consider the policy, we'll consider whether we think, you know, there's another policy, or something we want to pursue along the ideas of collective bargaining, and how an employee organization might do that, whether we want to do that or not, and then we might have an executive session. We also, and we might hear from, or, before that, we might hear from staff.
And I do think the decision we have to make here, I mean, to Doug's point earlier, staff are welcome to join a union, we can do that today, under Colorado law, there is, we have no decision on this topic one way or the other. The question for us is, do we want to recognize that union as collective bargaining partners?
Right, so I guess.
So I think, what we really need to decide on the second, I would like to, I mean, this is not necessarily like, we need to vote on it, but I do think we need to at least get some feedback from all of our trustees on what they would need to see in order to make that decision, right? And if that's, these are the contours of what I would be willing to negotiate on, then that would be good to know as well, because that ultimately leads to how this policy would work.
And I, I like that, sorry, I like that framing a lot, of what we would need to see to make that decision, not about making the decision on the second, because I think we're still two in the weeds.
And as part of that, I want to, like, I, I want to, actually want to look at this separate from their requests, that we're, our first step is creating a policy as trustees, how we're willing to engage in a collective bargaining position, that then becomes, like all the other policy that we've adopted in the last two years.
Right.
The policy of this district going forward, future board may want to undo that. Before we can be engaging with their request, we need to be clear, what are the categories we want, it's almost like we're creating a term sheet for us.
Yeah, no, it's going, like we said, it's, when we met with them, you know, whatever the policy is, it's going to govern the, the board, and how we behave.
And it, there could be, again, 38 of the employees here, of the 154, are management, they're not covered by this, that doesn't mean they couldn't decide to organize and come to us separately, under CWA, like the county employees, so we need a policy that is, for any group that wants to unionize, or wants to come before us, if we're willing to negotiate on collective bargaining, here is a policy around it, and then we move into where their specific request is.
So my goal is that we discuss more of this on the second, you know, not to get into those details, but, but that's going to be the preview of the discussion. Do you have, go ahead.
So in advance of that, were you suggesting that, when you said another round of conversation with the employees, were you suggesting that you would have, you two would have that conversation before the meeting on the second, or that was anything, no more conversation?
Probably, probably sometime in the new year.
Okay.
Or by, by the end of the year.
Okay.
Holidays and stuff.
Okay.
I plan on taking off Christmas, so, in those days, so, and I think, I think we're okay. You know.
If you're alive, I'm not sure you're going to make it.
I'm fine. Nothing's getting held up, everything's proceeding, the budget's been approved, the, all this employee stuff is going to go forward, so, you know, the, any changes that would be in the collective bargaining probably wouldn't take place until.
A year from now.
At least, yeah, so.
Okay, I just don't know if you were having another round of conversation, if that needs to fit in.
Yeah, okay, so does that, everybody feel comfortable with the kind of?
So engagement letter?
Engagement letter.
I'm on point to that.
And, and.
And I'll circulate it before we sign it, so if anyone has comments.
Are we inviting the attorney to the meeting on the second?
I'm.
Or is it our conversation?
I don't know, unless you have questions between now and the, and the meeting on the second, then I would say we probably don't need her there, but if you do have questions, then.
No, I think, I like the idea of our having a conversation.
Are folks comfortable with Benita and I potentially spending an hour meeting with our lawyer, our engagement, to basically talk through how we want to structure some of this over the next few months?
Yeah, that's great.
Absolutely.
Okay, we could do that.
We got it in the budget, so.
Yeah, but still, we can.
I know, yeah. Okay, so I think that is pretty good for this topic, and I appreciate it, because we don't ever get to talk together, so. That was good, a good conversation. Okay, the.
So in your packet, you have a draft job description with edits, and, again, it's to have something on record that has been adopted by us, and so you can see the edits to the version that David had sent to me, and I wasn't looking to do anything more than this, it isn't to take the place of the contract, or, you know, but it was to generally describe and have a job description that this board has adopted, or approved, adopted, I guess.
So.
Specifically, a job description for David's role?
Right, yes.
Okay, so the idea then, so on the 16th, which is our next regular meeting, you're going to come with a new contract and his pay increase?
I wasn't.
Presumably, and then we'll also have this policy to approve?
Well, this isn't part of the job description.
I mean, job description to approve?
I didn't know the contract was in my, my.
Or pay rate?
Not my list, or any of that, but we have, but Sylvia can talk about the evaluation or the survey tool that we're using.
Okay.
That she has a timeframe on, and she has revised it. Sylvia?
Well, the evaluation is not, I'm sorry, it's not necessarily an evaluation of, of David, it's actually our own self-int internal evaluation, so I, I don't know if we're on the same page on that.
Right, right, okay, that's our self-evaluation, the other evaluation with the goals is what you worked on.
So we talked about at the end of December, having, adding to David's contract, the goals list that we put together from a meeting a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Which I've sent to Doug.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is Doug in charge of writing the contract?
Well, I thought the governance, I thought we said at the end of the governance, the meeting, that the governance committee was going to come with a pay increase, what his pay increase, because you wanted that separated from the staff's, and his.
And the revised contract.
And the revised contract for 2026.
Okay, I'll take that.
And then.
I'll take that on.
With the goals, and I, yeah.
I'll do that, and then.
And then we can adopt this job description, and we can take a, if you want to do the survey.
I think, her timing on that survey is what, Sylvia?
Well, it was supposed to be done today, but unfortunately, I got a little busy. I am pretty close to having it updated, so, but this is, again, this is an internal board evaluation. I will do my best to get it sent to Celia and Doug, maybe by Monday, so when you're having Turkey Day, you can, you know, if you need a write for.
Can, can you?
Take a look at it then, and Benita, you and I can work on the contract together.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And Lydia, is it Lydia, right?
Libby.
Libby, sorry, can you do that in a Google, the, or the form like we did last time? The survey?
For you all?
For the, yeah, for the board members? Can you help with that, or David? Put it in like a Microsoft form, I think that was just easier.
Yes, and I think that was kind of what I anticipated is, I will, I mean, it's, it's not going to be, you know, necessarily very much different from the one we did last year, but we're just making some tweaks to it.
Yeah.
And that Benita, some good, good additions that could either be inserted, or take the place of a couple of things, so we're just kind of updating it a little bit, but yeah, we, we were hoping that the end result would be that it would become an online for us.
Yeah, and then, so, so, great, we'll get that, that won't take long.
And we'll work on the contract, and we'll get that.
The contract and the pay, and I think you can get directors' pay grades from the state library, if you, if you want to look at them, you know.
I think we have to vote on that.
We'll have, you'll have to come with a recommendation, and we'll vote on it, yes.
And then separately, we would have to vote to adopt the job description?
I think so, yeah.
As like a policy sort of?
We'd adopt the contract, the job description.
Because the job description's not separate.
Separate, yeah.
It's not related to.
No, it's just, so we have something on record.
Generic, yeah, and then.
And so folks had any additions or changes to this, you could send this to me.
Yeah, I saw this in the packet, but it, it didn't have any context, so.
Yeah.
So can I raise a point of clarity?
Yeah.
So you stated that I requested this, I, I never, I've never requested either a contract, a change to my contract, the only thing that I requested was not a six-month contract, so this is all here initially.
Oh, did I say that?
Yeah, you said, I requested a contract differently, I, I requested nothing, I never requested a contract.
No, 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 I said the board, okay, maybe I did, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't making that.
The only time is when I suggested I take a six-month contract, and I said I would rather not.
Yeah.
That's why we're doing it.
That's why we're doing this.
But we were trying to get it in sync with the calendar year and the budget.
That's why we're doing it next month.
So a year from now, it will all be done in December.
Yes.
Yeah, and we don't, won't do it in June.
Really, we should be doing it in November, so we can approve it with the rest of the budget, but we'll get there.
We have the fall season, the fourth quarter.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're good on that, Doug?
All right, thank you.
I have one other minor item, if you have anything.
Okay.
This is actually maybe a question for you guys more than anything else, but right now on our webpage that we have for the trustees, I don't think we're currently keeping a history of past trustees, and also, it seems like the city's deleted the old library commission website, which also means there is no longer a history of past commissioners.
We have that.
I, I know it exists, I have a copy of it as well, would it be possible to get it just repo, like, it doesn't need to be fancy, it's like a PDF posted on, and it probably makes sense just to import it all onto our current page, because that's the closest thing we have. Quite, yeah, we could just at the bottom have a pass, and either put in a PDF, or listen, or however you want to do it, but having the record somewhere would be good, I did have someone ask about who was a commissioner at a specific point in the past, and it seems like that information's a little hard to come by now, so. That was all.
And remember, we still want certificates from past trustees.
We, yeah, we're going to get that.
One thing, just a social event of note, there is a film at the dairy called The Librarians.
Oh, right.
November 26th through the 30th, at the Beidecker Theater, and it's, just sounds like a very interesting film, so.
It won Best Documentary at Sundance. It's going to be up for Oscars, and I'm trying to get it here, but they're doing their for-profit theatrical run first.
Oh, okay.
But I've been in touch with them. So once they're done with that, people will be showing it in the Canadian Theater sometime, probably before Oscar.
Oh, well, very cool. Well, see, there you go.
It'll be great.
The Librarians.
Sorry, David, if I must spoke earlier.
It's okay.
Okay, so I think that concludes our meeting.
Legal counsel.
Oh, legal counsel, Kim, sorry.
Nothing to add.
Okay. We, do I need to assign something?
Yeah, I'll bring this back as you're done.
Okay. And then, well, thank you. This is like the big thing that the board has to do every year, so. As you see, we do other stuff, too, but this is the big one. So, meeting's adjourned. Thank you. I guess use the gavel. Thank you, bye-bye.
Do you, like, have the gavel in your house?